Afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the February 26th Watershed Planning Commission meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order and also acknowledge, look at that great logo, the new logo at the top of our agenda looks wonderful. We all have the agenda in front of us and hopefully everyone received a copy of the minutes. If we have any changes to the agenda or modifications to the minutes, can the folks speak up now? Hearing none, can we have a motion to approve the agenda and the meeting minutes as we have received them?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pent, I move to approve as published and distributed.
And do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Casilius. I'll second the motion.
And thank you, Commissioners. I'll do roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Aye.
Commissioner Pent.
Aye.
Commissioner Casilius.
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
And Commissioner Thill.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Great. The motion has passed and it looks like our first item up is informational and our WMO Administrator Report from Vanessa.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So, timing was a little bit tight, so I was hoping she might be able to make it, but not quite. We did just get our last seat on the WPC filled. Commissioner Shilis Quoli actually comes to us from the very challenging area to fill where Commissioner Mierling used to sit, which is kind of the Shakopee O'Dowd area. It's one of our smallest subwatersheds, but we were extremely fortunate to get a really good applicant. She does have a lot of experience in public service and working with the CAP Agency. So be excited to get her on board here coming up pretty soon and hopefully at the next monthly meeting. With that, all of our WPC Commission seats are currently filled. So it's kind of a big deal for us and we're very excited to have all of you here. Because each of you makes a difference and each of you brings a different perspective to the WPC and it really makes it a really well-rounded agency. So, we appreciate that a lot. So, just wanted to give you guys a little bit of information on that. And then a few things that we are working on, obviously for us, as you guys know, this is heavy for reporting season, not just with the WMO Annual Report, but also some of the county reporting as well with our KPIs and County Annual Most Four Reporting coming up. So, we're pretty much, pretty heavily getting into reporting right now. In addition to reporting, Ryan certainly has updates on the CIP, which is where most of his time has been for the last few weeks. He's been knee-deep in it, quite literally and figuratively. Melissa is knee-deep, more figuratively. Obviously, we're starting to work on our planning efforts to update our plan. We've been meeting with Board Liaisons and Leadership to coordinate getting some Board Workshops and Board Meeting Dates on the calendar. And the Board did, as Melissa will mention, it's going to Board to initiate the kickoff for our plan coming up here in just a couple of weeks. So, in addition to that, we have a couple of larger activities going on again with the Met Council Metro Water Supply Plan and the Waters Policy Plan. There was a big workshop last week and a big Metro Regional Workshop coming up on this... Sorry, just a few days from now, the 29th. So, that'll bring together everybody in the region to kind of go over some of the guiding policies and principles for the Metro Water Supply Plan through Met Council. That's been a pretty active endeavor right now as well for us. And then in addition, we had our first kickoff meeting or our convene meeting for this round of WBIF funding. Troy at the SWCD very graciously and very well coordinated that kickoff meeting. So, we attempted to do this time around is bring together all the different kind of convene areas in the Scott County area. So, right now, Board of Water and Natural Resources allocates the funds per... It's basically WD-WMO boundary. They don't call it that, but that's pretty much what it is. And then they each are supposed to kind of go off and decide how to do their funding. When reality is, we have a lot of, you know, cities and townships that, you know, cross borders and sometimes we have more funds in one little planning area than another. So, we thought we'd try kind of to all get together and meet together to help us kind of identify more Scott County-wide what the priorities are. Now, we're not pooling the funds for the county, but it does allow us to kind of at once get together and identify within each of those areas what those priorities are for the projects and the activities that those funds will go to. And then if there's leftover funds, it helps us as a group quickly reallocate it rather than having several, several sub meetings. So, we're pretty excited about that. Second meeting will be here in April and we should be pretty much well on our way at that point for funds. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thanks, Vanessa. Any questions for Vanessa? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move on to our ongoing business. Looks like Troy, you're up first.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep, we can.
Perfect. Okay, I'm not going to hit all the details in the report, so Ryan, it might be difficult to follow along. I'm just going to hit a couple of things and highlights and let the Commissioners read the rest at their leisure. But the first one is with respect to the Technical Assistance and Cost Share Program. You'll see the bar chart there on the far right-hand side is February. So, we're hovering around just about 130 active service requests within the Scott WMO and a little over 75, close to 80 projects are active. And those are in, at any phase of early planning to final closeout and certification. So, you can see the level is holding steady. This is about where we're at February. And that's after a good amount of projects that we finished up. In fact, we certified over almost 70 projects countywide and over 60% of those were in the WMO. So, about 40 to 42 projects total were installed and certified as of the end of December last year. And the total sum of those 40-some projects was a little over $410,000, close to $415,000 total. Which brings me to the next part on that. Ryan, right below there, you'll see the cost share funds. So, we have on the books $937 worth of grant award, but we have spent about $425,000, not quite half of that. So, we're sitting on a little over $488,000 currently. Some of those grants, a small portion will extend beyond this year, but most of those grants need to be spent this year. So, we are going to be prioritizing heavily this year on outreach and marketing, especially this next couple of weeks to months. Staff are going to focus heavily on trying to really push the BMPs and practices that are aligned with those grants so we can get those grant funds spent. So, again, that's going to be a high priority for us. The next, I'll just skip down too quickly, is monitoring. We don't have anything significant going on now. Of course, we're outside the monitoring season, but we are gearing up for Sand Creek. That's a big push this year. It's going to take a lot of heavy lifting. So, we're just doing some work planning, coordinating, getting all the equipment in-house and prepared and get that ready to set up when student's weather is permitting. A number of those pieces of equipment, we don't put out until the threat of freezing has passed, so we do have to wait. But that's going to be a big push. And then finally, I'll just skip to the end, Ryan. You'll see quite a long list of payments were made this past month. So, a lot of projects, as I said, were finished out last quarter. You'll see quite a few payments in the WMO totaling. What is that total? A little over $126,000 in payments. That's one of our highest reporting numbers yet. So, a number of those projects, you see the ones with the asterisk under the cooperator name. Those all have fact sheets associated with those and those are the ones that follow on that staff report are the fact sheets for those projects. So, there's pretty good cross-section of project types and before and after photos that you can review at your leisure. With that, Madam Chair, I'll try to answer any questions.
Thanks so much, Ryan. Questions for Ryan?
Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Troy, I'm sorry.
We know who you're talking about. You know, we have a fair number of tax projects already for this past year. And the number of tax projects has held reasonably well. Do you want to talk a little bit more? Because we've had a little discussions as to, you know, how we keep ending up right now with this kind of high balance of cost share funds to use in the grants? And kind of how we got to the point where we're at, where we had such a large... But we're only about halfway through and kind of what's led to that, because obviously we certainly have a fair number of projects going in the ground.
Yeah, it's a good question, Madam Chair and Vanessa. So, this is a pendulum and it has been for the last 20 years where we've been at points where we've had so much demand and so little cost share. We had to put waiting lists and we couldn't get projects in. We're at the other end of that spectrum now where we've gotten a flush of funding and the amount of landowner reply to that hasn't materialized. Part of that is just, it's a lot more funding than we're used to. There was back in 2015, there was a large grant. Number of Commissioners, remember the larger Clean Water Watershed Grant, that was like a couple million, I believe. A lot of that was CIPs, but a good chunk of it was for tax program as well. But that also came at the heels of some significant rainfall events which caused significant erosions. And that was in the minds of a lot of landowners and farmers and we were, you know, we didn't do any outreach hardly and we had folks coming in the door. The last couple of years now, so we've seen this increase in funding. At the same time, we've been in drought conditions, very little, you know, severe erosion going on. And so, you kind of have this imbalance, I guess. But as mentioned, Vanessa, we do have probably a close to average amount of interest in the program. It's not that that hasn't declined necessarily, outside of the fact that we haven't had any significant rainfall events to trigger more interest. But it has more to do with the fact that we're getting these more consistent and reliable infusions of funds through the Watershed Basin Rotation Program. So, when we started going after clean water funds, I want to say close to... Like back in 13, so close to 10 years ago, those are all competitive grants and you were very conservative and you were lucky if you got them. But now, you know, this regular amount of funding has come at a time when, you know, demand isn't as high as the funding. So, I'm sure we'll see a point in time again where that flips again, because I think it is pretty fluid. But at this point, we're, you know, we are sitting on a significant funding and we've got to be careful how much, you know, expectation we have in terms of adding more funds to our cost share program. But yeah, it's challenging, but I think it's kind of a good problem to have. It's always better to have more funds and challenge staff to be able to get out there. And if we have to sell more and knock on doors, that's exactly what we'll do in order to utilize all the funding that's available.
Thanks, Troy. I think a little bit more deep dive into kind of like those longer discussions and what's really going into this, I think really helps the Commissioners and staff kind of understand the program as a whole. Because, you know, looking at it year to year, you kind of get that snapshot in your mind. And then it always takes a little bit of extra time to step back and look at, as you said, the pendulums as they swing over the years and kind of the big picture as to how the program's going as a whole.
Right, exactly.
All right. That's good additional information. Any other questions for Troy or follow-up?
This is Commissioner Casilius, and I think we touched on this once before, but my understanding is it's not an awareness problem for the program, correct?
I don't think so. I don't sense that. But at the same token, it might be something where, you know, if you have a certain goal, like with a specific project grant project that you have, that you want to target a certain area, a certain type of practice. So, it's not, even though there's general awareness of the program out there, Commissioner Casilius, there may not be a sense of priority among the community in the area we're focusing on with a particular grant. So, that would mean that that area or that group of practices or type of practice, if we want to move more of them, we still have to do some outreach and promotion and increase awareness because of that special priority.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you for clarifying.
I will also add, Commissioner Casilius, when we have a kind of a sub-local partner that really helps promote the program, like the Cedar Lake Improvement District, we do notice there's a definite uptick in getting tax projects and a lot more drive and support. So, unfortunately, we don't necessarily always have those neighborhood contacts or those little sub-regional contacts. But obviously, that's something to always be focusing on too and something we can always continue to work on developing. Because certainly where we have them, that definitely helps with raising like awareness and adoption and applications.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Good point.
Thanks for clarifying.
Good questions. All right, last call. Any more questions, comments? Okay, thanks so much, Troy. Ryan, your program updates.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. I apologize for the last meeting. I listened in, but I didn't trust my cell service down kind of in a low-lying area next to a creek. So, I didn't want to chime in. I was on calls earlier that day and it was spotty. So, it's nice to actually be back in front and see everybody here. So, big thing, like Vanessa mentioned, spent a lot of time here in the last few weeks on our capital improvement project. I won't touch base on the one that's under construction. I've got a separate agenda item for that one. The Pica Creek Ravine is at 90%, or it's going towards the 90% design plan. So, once again, we'll send that out to all the landowners. They'll have a chance to comment on it. I did go out for permitting already. I'd heard back from the DNR and LGU, which in this case was the SWCD that's administering it on behalf of the township. So, I did get approvals from both of them. So, now I'm just waiting on Army Corps of Engineers. So, once we get that, that should be most of our permitting. There's still, you know, NPDS and all that when we get closer to construction. But for the WAC standpoint, we're looking like we're in good shape. Vanessa already mentioned this as well, but reporting, so we've got several grants. Our EPA Grant, our Natural Resources Black Grant, which that's also split up between Melissa and SWCD and then our two WBIF Grants. So, that January is a pretty busy month for doing reporting. So, with the number of those grants and kind of all having the same deadline, February 2nd, which is the day after it's all due, feels pretty nice. You get a relief after you get everything submitted. Also, we'll be working on our key performance indicators, like Vanessa already said. So, that'll kind of be the next thing and then they end our report and we'll get into that here in the next couple of months. Last thing is our Markley Lake Report. So, it's the Flood Mitigation Study. That is out for comments from the DNR right now. And then, so we're in the process of kind of wrapping up that report and we're hoping that it should be kind of all wrapped up here in the next month or so. So, we're just soliciting comments from the DNR. We'll get some more comments from residents and then kind of finalize the report. With that, I'll stand. Any questions?
Thanks, Ryan. Marquee Lake was the one up closer to Quick Trip in Prior Lake, right? Not the one south of Prior Lake?
Good memory, yes. So, just kind of northeast of that Quick Trip. They are right on the line between Prior Lake and Credit River. So, they're both partners in that study as well.
Okay, thanks.
Questions for Ryan? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ryan, can I share my screen? Okay, so, I just have a few updates. We have in our Watership Plan to complete another survey with the University of Minnesota to see if there were any changes from the... If you remember, we've done three surveys with them so far, one in 2012, one in 2017, and one in 2019. We're just going to focus on kind of a repeat of 2012 and 2019, but with a little bit of change to it. So, we want to look at those past surveys on attitudes and behaviors towards conservation or water resources for residents. And so, I finished a draft kind of design concept two weeks ago, sent it to Amit, who I work with. He's a professor at the UVM and we had a conversation kind of about that. And so, the purpose of this next survey, we're changing it a little bit, is first of all, to document changes from the last two surveys regarding attitudes and behavior changes towards water resources and adopting conservation. But we also need it to be useful information for the next Watership Plan Update that we're starting this year. So, I ran this past Vanessa and what we kind of decided on was that what we'd like to know from this survey is what was the effectiveness of our plan implementation towards our water resource outcomes that we had in the plan? So, in Chapter 3 of our plan, some of you may have remembered this, but when we did this last plan update, we had you prioritize what do we want our water resource outcomes to be? And these are in order of priority that we want to focus first on human health and safety. And second, ranked second was protecting groundwater. And then focusing on soil health was ranked third. And then surface water quality protection was ranked fourth. So, we want to know, we're going to use this survey and design it to know, you know, how close are we in the minds of our residents on achieving some of these water resource outcomes? And so, some of the questions are going to be formulated, at least one to also focus on how we prioritize our surface water quality pollutants that we listed in the plan. And these were prioritized in order that they're listed here is that, you know, we're most concerned about toxins and metals because that's really related to human health and safety. And so is bacteria related to human health and safety. And then we might throw in a question related to how we prioritize specific water bodies, which was, if you remember this, some of you might remember this activity on water body attributes and what was most important that we focus on in choosing which priority water bodies to focus on in the plan. So, whether it contributes to a drinking water aquifer, whether the water's contributing high gluten loads downstream, and so on and so forth. So, I just wanted to show you this so it hopefully brings back some memories and it's a little bit more understandable about how we're designing this next survey. So, really, we're going to, so really, the outcome of the survey is to answer the question of how effective was the plan implementation in achieving those desired water resource outcomes? A couple of other ways that we're changing the survey again is that, you know, the last ones, we focused just on randomly selecting parcels in the Sand Creek Watershed. This time, we're going to focus on all of the Scott WMO area of Scott County. So, we will have Amit and his team code the surveys in such a way that they can pull out the data to use in comparison from the past surveys of people just in Sand Creek. But we also want to know what, you know, input is from people outside of Sand Creek, because the WMO is a larger area than just Sand Creek and Scott County. So, we normally send out 1,000 surveys and we're going to increase that to 1,500, just to be able to get some of those outside areas. So, kind of a draft timeline for when this is going to start. Amit is going to put together an official scope of work based on our design concept. And then we're kind of talked about having the questions and the questionnaire ready to be mailed out in June. And that'll take a couple of months, because we'll do three rounds of mailings. And then he could probably have some preliminary results for us by late fall, early winter, with a final report probably not coming in until like spring of 2025. But at least we'll have some preliminary results to discuss with you and to show you. So, I will stop sharing that. So, that's the first update. Does anybody have any questions about that before I move on? Don't hear any? Okay. So, the logo and branding, obviously you saw the new logo on the packet. And we'll be sharing that, Vanessa, I think you said at the beginning of the meeting, after... I'm sorry, what did you say? I thought I was going to be able to get shared after this meeting, but I think you want me to wait a little bit?
Um, no, I'm just saying the, oh yeah, earlier. So, the kind of the first official release for the WMO using it is really the Annual Report. Obviously, we'll start quietly, think of it as a soft open. We'll start quietly using it on obviously all of our materials moving forward. But our official grant opening will be the Annual Report. So, it's the analogy that I have.
So, I did just set up a meeting with Vanessa and Studio Lola to continue with some other collateral items for our new branding colors and our new logo. So, we're going to, on March 7th, we'll meet with Studio Lola to kind of give her some guidance on designing the Annual Report template. The Camp Monitoring Program, so this year, I'm looking for a new volunteer monitor for Cedar Lake and for McMahon. I heard back from our volunteer on McMahon who doesn't want to continue. He's been doing it for quite a few years now. So, I did find two people interested in Cedar Lake. I'm going to set up some phone calls with them just to kind of make sure they fully understand the commitment, because we want to make sure we get a lot more samples this year. We really need that data for the full season to inform the next plan on the water quality in Cedar and all the lakes that we monitor. So, McMahon, I just sent out an email today. I have an email distribution list of all the residents there. So, hopefully I'll hear back from somebody soon and find somebody for that. Credit River Data Analysis, I have started the work order for BAR Engineering, because we now have a master agreement with them. So, I can just do a work order. I'll finish that up hopefully this week and have Mary Keane, our contract coordinator, move that through the approval process so we can have BAR kind of analyze that data and kind of have a better idea of where Credit River is with water quality. And then lastly, the, as Vanessa kind of mentioned a little bit earlier, I do have an RBA going to the Board on March 5th for the County Board to authorize the initiation of the plan update. And that's all I have, Madam Chair, so open to any questions anyone has.
Thanks, Melissa. Questions for Melissa? Okay, next topic is the One Watershed One Plan Updates. And I don't have any updates for this month. We didn't meet again, because we're still in that review period where they're looking for comments from partners. So, unless Vanessa or Melissa, you heard of anything, or Commissioner Pent have anything to add, there's nothing to update there. Okay, hearing none, I think we can move on to new business. So, it looks like Ryan's up first with our CIP progress.
And Chair, Commissioners, so this is what I've been doing for the last couple of months. So, as we kind of talked about, our... So as we kind of talked about, our Xanadu capital improvement project is well underway. Spoiler alert, it's not done yet. So they are still working on it this week. They were out there all day today working on it. So what I've done is I've actually just prepared, instead of just talking about it, I prepared a slideshow that I can show to everybody and just kind of walk through the different steps of the projects, some neat things, some challenges that were met, and and just kind of go from there. So the project did have a substantially completed date of February 28th, so that would be this Wednesday. And I would say they're already at kind of that point right now. What they're doing is surface fabric on, that is not on the actual structures themselves. And just kind of restoration and cleanup and odd end things. We had to install a cattle gate that was going in today too. So I would say it's deemed it's already kind of substantially complete. So they did meet their deadline. Probably one of the fastest projects that, that we've had go in. So it was Vite and Company Incorporated is the company that actually won the bid. And I will say they've done a fantastic job with it. So everything's been going pretty smooth with them. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing this and I'll open up the PowerPoint.
I will note while you do that, Vite generally doesn't bid on water resource projects by and large. I actually think the coordination with the county actually allowed us to get Vite. I think they probably saw the bid and, and approached the bid simply because it was through the county. So I think that was a really great leverage opportunity. Usually WDs, WMOs don't get something like Vite, so I just wanted to point that out as well.
Yes, they are a big company. I mean, they, they do a lot of structural stuff. Oddly enough, they hit our phase, so this is phase six. It's a little confusing because we haven't installed phase five yet. And phase three is basically on hold for now, but our phase one site was three of them. Invite actually did those. I think it's helped in this situation because the kind of head foreman out there, his name is Nathan, he actually was the head foreman for phase one. So I think that familiarity at least has kind of, that's why I think they moved so fast on this one is they knew what they were kind of getting into, so.
And then I, I saw Mr. Lonnie.
Yes, I was just going to say Vite did one of our watershed projects over by Sutton Lake. They did structures and grading and they did an excellent job too. So they're, they're doing more projects in Scott County. That's great.
That's excellent to hear. I think, I think through the, the county, the, the county, city, township partnerships and connections, we're starting to get a little bit better opportunities and response on our bids. So that's great to hear. They were able to do one of the district's projects too. Thanks for sharing that.
Yes, thank you, Bruce. That, that's great to hear that. Hopefully, we've got the Pecos project coming up too. Maybe we can get them to get us a bid on that for kind of this upcoming winter, the winter of 2024, 25. So just briefly, I don't want to bore you too much with the design plans. So I just attached a few of the kind of main drawings of what are we trying to accomplish? And essentially what it is, is it's a bluff along Sand Creek. And a series of these log jam, trim structures are built to, in essence, take pressure off the toe of that bluff. You are essentially moving the stream, so to speak, away from the toe of that bluff. It's giving it a shelf for all that upper escarpment material to fall onto. And hopefully, eventually in geological time, which can take a long time, you get, it'll continue to fall back the upper bluff to a point where you've got an angle of repose where you can actually get vegetation establishment that we aren't planting, you know, that, that nature will sort of kind of take a hold of. So in this case, we've got four structures. One of them is like a supersized structure. You can kind of see it's the second one from kind of going downstream. And then the last structure too is kind of a modified larger structure as well. It's like a double structure. So our phase four, which would be the site that's literally a few hundred feet upstream of this. It was four structures, but they were all just a four pack, you call it. So there's four pile logs that kind of are the outside part of it. Whereas like the supersized one, that's eight of them are in one, or sorry, 16 of them in one. So it's essentially like four structures that are all combined. So, and the idea is to reduce sediment phosphorus from entering Sand Creek. That's the goal of the project. And I'm having trouble moving the, oh, there we go. All right. So first things first, gotta get all the materials on site. So for anybody that has seen these presentations before, it's very similar. There's always like slight modifications from each of these phases that were done. Concepts are the same. You need lots of large pieces of logs. You need logs with the root rods attached, and then we need some, something to counteract the buoyancy of wood being in water. And that's where that riprap and the large boulders come in. I put my mitten on the boulder to kind of show a scale reference of how big they were. So one of the challenges was because these boulders were so big, fitting them into these structures wasn't necessarily easy. So that was one of the challenges that the contractor kind of had to work around. First things first, we've got vertical logs that need to be driven into the ground a minimum of six feet. And what that does is that these, they compile logs. And every log then that gets placed in that structure is attached to another log, most of which are attached to pile logs. And so the, the idea is that if they're driven into the ground six feet, that for them to pop out and, you know, go flowing downstream is very unlikely. And the next slide will kind of get into how they test that and how they actually get the logs into the ground. So these are very important for the structure. This is sort of what's holding everything kind of together. So very critical piece to get these at the depths that they're supposed to be at. And then, and then they'll do a pullout test. We'll kind of show, I'll show that on the next slide. So this is a video, and how they actually got the logs in the ground is they use a vibratory hammer attachment at the end of that excavator. And it's a little loud when I play the video, but what it's essentially doing is holding on to that log and it's vibrating it and pushing it into the ground. It's very interesting because there's a very hard clay pan layer that you'd be watching this log and, you know, for several minutes, a lot of them, they didn't move, it didn't look like they were moving at all. And all of a sudden, they'd get through that clay layer and it was just, they, they went down quite a bit. Which then I think helps with our pullout test. So what they have to do is we randomly test several of the logs after they've been installed. So now they put a, essentially attach a cable to the logs. And they've got a machine that, that tests the strength of how, how hard they're pulling on it. So they had to meet a certain threshold that they'd have to pull so hard without that log coming out that were moving, that, that they'd have to meet. And so they, they met it, which was really good. All right, here's the video. Not super exciting until I got through that clay pan layer, but nonetheless, kind of neat. That, one of the big things for Vite is they have that piece of equipment on site. And it sounds like from talking to other contracting firms, it's not the easiest piece of equipment to, to get if you don't already have it or to rent it. So I think that was one of the things that really benefited Vite in this case. So after you get the vertical logs in, you have to be able to work in the water. And in order to do that, you've got to de-water these structures. And so the method the contractor took, I think they've used this on all the projects so far. Oh, I shouldn't, I should say, there is another one off of Xanadu Avenue that's on Porter Creek that they actually diverted the whole stream. So, but most of these projects are using the same method. They build basically a copper dam out of material that's on site around the structure area. And a path that in, it's, it's kind of clay material, so it packs really well. And then you turn the pumps on and then you pump that water in. And there is a certain layer where you can get to where you'd be working out of the water. So that they, what worked really well for them is they were efficient. They got all the structures to that point of being de-watered. And then they, they basically didn't have to pump anymore of the rest of the project because they got everything all to that point and then kind of finished each of them. Fun thing was, in one of the structures, there was actually fish. So we were, as we're kind of watching them do this, we were grabbing the fish and trying to save them, throwing them kind of over the copper dam and into the creek again. So this is them building the layer. So you'll notice, it's hard to see, but that's the gentleman who's kind of bending over has a drill in their hand. And what they're doing is they're drilling through the log that's laying on the ground and then our vertical pile log. And what they do is they put a threaded rod connection through them. So they'll drill through both of them, put this rod in there. And the picture to the right, you kind of see it at the very bottom, that rod that's next to the pump is what they look like. And basically, we just need those connections for each of those logs. So that way they don't move around within the structure as, you know, water levels come up. So like a washing machine, you got your log boulder placement, riprap backfill, and then you just repeat. So you, you, the layers are kind of all the same. The only difference being those large boulders you see in the top right picture. Those go at the very bottom of the structures. And then that's the only layer that they're there. And what they're meant for is, once again, to just counteract the buoyancy of the log. So wood floats and you gotta kind of counteract that with something. And those boulders are helping. In, in past projects, they've actually done connections with those boulders. This one, we didn't do those. But, so that's why I said every one of these is just a little slightly different than a previous one. And then that riprap as well that goes in there. And then they also put in slash and soil. And slash is just some of the material that is smaller branches. Just kind of woody debris habitat that they stick inside the structures, so. So yeah, then, then they just keep repeating this process till they hit the elevations of the top of the structures. Drone photo day. So we, we had, we were lucky enough to have Andy from the Saw and Water come out and take some drone photos for us. So just thought they were neat to share. We'll be doing another one of these photo days after it greens up. So kind of do like a comparison for any, you know, future presentations or just to have on file that we've got these photos. So they're just kind of neat to look at while construction's happening. And gives you that bird's eye view of what they look like from on top. So you can kind of see one structure there is, is largely wrapped up. It's got all the material and the soil on top. And then you can see the one where it's got the logs and the boulders all exposed. So they're just at different points. Just when things were going well, we had both spring and winter arrived during construction. So we've had obviously a very mild winter. We had a string of, you know, several days of unseasonably warm, 50 degree days in February. Now, the picture on the bottom is not actually from while we were out there, but I wanted to make it seem like it was, it felt like spring out there. Same thing with today. None of the other pictures really show that it looks, you know, halfway like spring. So it's, it's still kind of mucky and a little bit dreary, so. But we also, yeah, we had the, the snowfall. And so both of those, what they kind of did was warming it up made the access roads very difficult and slimy to kind of move around in. Today, the landlord came down and he's side by side. He was, you know, he was kind of having trouble getting up out of the staging area we're in. So that's been probably one of the bigger challenges with this project is the weather has kind of impacted the site where, you know, trucks can't really get to and from that easily down to the site. So, and then also the snow and that, since it's been melting, it's kind of done the same thing where it's just making access a little bit more challenging. Back to putting it in. So these are just, they're putting the finishing touches on some of the backfill. Just getting the structures kind of up to the elevations that they're supposed to be at. This is one of the more recent things that they've been doing. It's the fabric encapsulated soil lifts. So on top, they have these lifts. And what they're intended to do is, once again, you're kind of adding weight to the structure. But a big thing is they're backfilled with black dirt. And why that is, is we want vegetation to grow on these structures. And so these things will get trees and shrubs planted into them. Not anytime soon. It'll be spring, summer, when Vite comes back. And I think this one is actually their sub is going to do it for them. But these lifts are intended to kind of allow for that black dirt to be there and kind of hold things in place while giving those trees and shrubs a chance to kind of grow and, and take over for long-term stabilization. And they're just anchored with those wooden wedges that you see. And then they kind of trench down all sides of it too. This is what they're kind of working on right now, so that inside bend grading. So if you're sort, sort of shifting the stream, so to speak, you also have to kind of take into account on the opposite bank because we can't constrict flows. We can't raise water levels. And so the inside bend of the stream then is excavated and kind of pulled back to sort of keep that, that same stream profile. And then when they do that, we want to make sure that that is also protected. And so now that's getting surface fabric placed on it. It's a coir fabric with coconut fiber blanket, so it's double wrapped, has native seed in it. We'll also be planting trees and shrubs on that inside bend too. We did have to cut out some willow trees. We can kind of see there's a stump left of one. And that was intentional to leave that in there and kind of do the fabric around it because those willows will regenerate. If you came out there in July, you'd probably see about 50 willow shoots probably coming off that stump. They're all trying to, trying to be the next tree to grow off of it. So there is, I think, two of those that were out there, those stumps. For and after. So that was my, my fake springtime picture on the right. And then you can kind of see the after to the left and how it's kind of the same angle that was, that picture was taken from. And you can just see that shell that has kind of been built for all that material to deposit on. And what are our next steps? So it's going to be heavy into restoration of the site, tree and shrub planting, and then the contractor is responsible for watering them as well. We want to make sure that they grow. Ensure that the landlord is happy and how their property looks afterwards. So this is a voluntary project and the landlord participation is very important. And we want to make sure that at the end of the day, they are also, you know, a part of this and happy with how it looks. Landowner is out there this morning. We walked the site. I think we're in pretty good shape there with everything. So we'll still be putting out a final punch list with that too. Talking about the drone photos, so when it greens up, we'll be doing that. Make our final payment. Then also, one thing to note is we do have a RBA going to our board for an ASBelt being done by the design firm. So we haven't done that in the past to kind of save money. And we weren't sure that we'd have enough funds here to do that on this project. But it makes the most sense for the, the engineer that signed the plans also do the ASBelt. And why we have money in our current contract is because the contractor moves so fast. So Interflue is helping us with the construction observation. And because contractor moves so fast, they didn't have to spend as much time out there. Thus, we have the money to, already in our contract that they can do the work. So now we'll be going on the March 19th RBA to our board. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. Anybody has any?
This was great. I love seeing construction photos and, and hearing about how it goes and stuff like that. So especially when you can get the drone footage in there, because it just totally gives a whole nother perspective.
Yeah, for sure.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Pint. I have a question. Okay. Ryan, yeah, can you orientate me again, either with a map or just a description exactly where this project? Yeah, can you uh orientate me again either with a uh map or just a description exactly where this project is again? I can't remember.
Yes, so um I can pull up SG three if you bear with me for a little bit, I could pull it up. Um, it shouldn't take that long, actually, and then I'll describe it as I'm doing that, so. You've got uh the golf course, um just south of Jordan. And then uh County Road Eight runs just south of the golf course. So our access road is off County Road Eight, but it is a hike uh back there and with the. Muckiness of everything, we are all getting our steps in, because you you kind of have to walk a ways. Because vehicles can't really get back there, so um. I've got it pulled up here.
So I will, while Ryan finishes that, uh I'll have a I'll add a couple of different things, Madam Chair Commissioners. Uh, one is that, you know, these really are the WMO's flagship projects, these are the ones that. Uh Bowser puts on their uh page to highlight, um these are really generally what we're we're best at. Uh, but obviously they don't come cheap and it takes a long time to get them uh funding for them and get them installed. Uh, and then uh honestly, a large part of how they get installed and why they get installed is Ryan's got a very strong. Uh, professional skill and talent for working with landowners uh in ways that a lot of other folks aren't, so um. We definitely need to to recognize that, um both the the talent we have here and and the work everybody does to get them. Uh funded, uh I'll also add that one of our lessons learned is definitely this time. That we really do need to start getting our ASBelt's uh done at the end of the project by the. Uh, by the designer, um the designer designer is the one that designed it and the engineers really are the ones that are best to say that it was. Uh, installed to to meet the design, uh but it is something I think we are probably will need to start putting not just in our contracts. But perhaps in our ordinance as well, uh because uh usually we could do get a bit of pushback and this is generally true across the board that. Uh, designers don't necessarily want to do the ASBelt's, there's not a lot of benefit for them to do them, so um. It it's a small thing, but it is is valuable to ensure that what we are installing is going to function as designed. Uh, and that we reduce any liability of of. Things not necessarily going according to plan uh to the best of our ability, I've acknowledging that these are natural systems. So I'm sure I've now given Ryan plenty of time to pull it up there at SG three.
Yes, can everyone see my screen?
Yep, we can see.
Okay, perfect. So here we've got Highway twenty-one that leads to the golf course, which is at Sand Creek. County Road Eight right here uh running through and as I zoom in here. Here is our previous uh site that was constructed, so structure one, two, three, and four. Uh, so you can kind of, you can even see them from aerial photography, and here is our site that we're working on now, so it's. It's literally just the next downstream uh bend. And I'll throw on a pictometry image, so you can kind of see what the erosion looks like. Bear with me. Right there, it gives you a good look at what that bluff um looks like. And essentially that shelf they're building is just gonna alleviate some of the pressure on there.
Yeah, Ryan, thank you so much. Now I understand exactly, I've been back there and I've looked at that already and I think in fact in the past I've even asked you about that. Particular block, so now I'm very familiar, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Is there a expected lifespan for these?
So uh Madam Chair, great question. So uh bare minimum, we need it to last twenty-five years, that's how long our easement is for, um we're using Bowser funding for it. However, talking to Interflue, it it really depends, so if that upper bluff really doesn't come down on top of it. And bury it, it's going to shorten the life expectancy of the structures because it's going to be more exposed to sun. And water, and now if it does come down and bury it, should last a lot longer. Um, off the top of my head, if I remember correctly, I think the expectation was like forty plus years we should be looking at for. Um, bare minimum, but if they get buried, they should last a very long time then.
And then along this picture, do you know about how high the floodplain is? I mean, I'm guessing we're not out. Or or maybe even what's the height there?
The elevation?
Yeah, that just that you're showing the slope or the bank.
Oh, the height of it, um we are looking at, ah I should try to. You're with me here.
Yeah, you can turn on the contours and you can turn on the floodplain layer, it's it's pretty steep where the bank is, but the other side. Yeah, it's about eight seventy-three.
Yeah. And then the actual from top of that, I was in the twenties. Yeah, it's about twenty-two feet-ish, twenty-three feet, somewhere on there. Some of them that we've had in the past were, you know, getting upwards of a hundred feet, but um. You know, we dwindled down our list quite a bit and um, you know, these, this kind of, this represents one of our last ones, I mean, the Pika Creek. Will be the last one for this round of our plan. So we've done fairly well, um kind of dwindling our list from that feasibility study where all these kind of derived from. All with the help of willing landowners from from Scott County and we're really lucky in that regard. Um, and then also one thing to note too, uh we do utilize Scott County Highway staff. Uh, so they do the inspections for road projects. Um, luckily with these being in the winter, we've always had really good luck with getting a staff member from them to kind of help out with these inspections, so. Um, his name that's been helping is Cody Nelson and he's been very instrumental to this project going in as well.
Other questions for Ryan?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is uh Commissioner Phillips, um Ryan, can you talk about the financing of the project? What's a ballpark uh cost for the project and um cost share from the homeowner and it's kind of. You uh they they don't have to be exact numbers, I was just curious just for my own uh. Kind of what the what the ballpark numbers for a project like this would be.
Absolutely, great question, Madam Chair, Commissioner Phillips, so construction costs for this project is. Four hundred and twenty thousand and I think two hundred and twenty-eight dollars to be exact. Uh, so that was the low bid, and then we have a grant from Bowser. And that one, and Vanessa, maybe you know the exact number, I think it's three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Somewhere in that neighborhood. And then the remaining balance would be that of the WMO, so I think what I. Did, it's it's around eighty-ish thousand dollars, if I remember correctly, of. What the WMO's contribution would be to the project, so largely, this is being funded by the Board of Water and Soil Resources. With those grants, you always have to have your local match. Um, but landowners, we do not ask or we do not pay the landowners um anything. Uh, in lieu of them dedicating the easements to us, so in some situations you got to pay for easements and. We uh have an agreement with the landlord in place. That sort of acknowledges that this project is both beneficial to their, you know, property and also, you know, to. Waters of Scott County, and so um there's no payment being exchanged uh between us and the landlord. Or any of it.
All told, Ryan, uh in addition to just the construction costs, um adding additional staff time. How much do you? I think that's another good estimate.
Yeah, that's a great question, uh so I can definitively say we've got a hundred. Uh, plus thousand into the design of it. Um, I don't know the exact number, it's somewhere in the ballpark of a hundred and twenty-ish thousand, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand for design. Staff time's a little trickier because I haven't, we've been spending so much time on it more recently. Um, but we're we're certainly in the tens of thousands of dollars because from start to finish for this project. These CIPs take roughly a year to go from start to finish. So there's a lot of staff time and it's not just, you know, natural resources, so you know, Vanessa and. Melissa and Megan, they might have some time into it as well, and and then obviously myself. But we're utilizing, you know, highway staff, like I just mentioned, for inspections, survey staff for our easements. Uh, land records for recording the easements, uh legal department for contracts, so I mean, it's a total team effort for these and. Uh, you know, one person can't do it alone, it's it really, we're fortunate enough that we've. Got such supportive staff at the county that are willing to help us on these and and that's really what with the landlord makes them go.
Yep, so yeah, when you put it all together, the construction costs, the design costs, staff time, both internally, feasibility study. Um, they generally push about eight hundred thousand dollars. Give or take on average, some can be a little bit more, some can certainly be a little bit less, um. And these are our largest CIPs, so these are our, the WMO's capital projects. Uh, as opposed to like the smaller tax projects, which are the cost share projects we do with landowners. Uh, these are the the WMO's capital projects, so. Uh, kind of giving you a ballpark figure as to kind of how much that costs, it's about what it costs us to do each year, uh each time we do one of these. Uh, and so generally, uh we do need to spend a couple of years actually saving money. To pay for these, uh or we sometimes have to do these things uh generally in stages, so we may take a five years building up to the actually the construction. Cost and saving money just to get the construction installed, but um we have been pretty successful at it and so hopefully that continues. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, fantastic, thank you for that, and. One more secondary question, what kind of fish did you pull out of there? I saw some pictures there, is that a goby?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Phillips. I believe that was a sucker, now he was covered in uh kind of silt a little bit, so I'm not sure what. Uh, species of sucker, but he was a sucker. Uh, we were also pulling out some bullheads, some creek chubs, some Johnny Darters, uh sticklebacks, so. There was a, there was actually like a kind of a good variety. Oh, then I was waiting for a walleye or something neat, but we didn't come across any.
Those uh fish surveys are really helping you with your uh fisheye identification.
Yeah.
Nice job.
Thank you for that, appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, one last call for questions, oh, go ahead, Ryan, if you're gonna add something.
And the only other thing I was gonna say is is um, you know, we leave the site on Friday. And we come back, you know, this morning, and you can already see deposition from that upper bluff that's depositing. You know, it it probably amounts to a few, you know, five gallon buckets. But imagine just a few five gallon buckets every day, you know, it it really does add up, it's it's. Pretty incredible to see just in the this time period of a couple of days how much it's saving already.
Very cool. Okay, um I think we can move on to our Warcraft inspections Report, Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm gonna share my screen here. This will stop others. Do you see that message on there?
I just see you speaking right now.
Yeah, it'll it'll usually tell you that others can't share while you share kind of thing, yep, then that's okay.
Why am I not seeing the? Sorry, when I hit share, I'm not seeing my thing that is open. I don't think that's it. Why is that not? Showing up? Uh, maybe I chose something wrong, but it's not letting me choose my PDF here.
Do you wanna send it to Ryan really quick?
Yeah, yeah, if you want to send it to me, I can try to share it.
Well, if it, is it the one in the um packet? Because if you go down further in the packet, we have the Warcraft inspections Report.
Yeah, that's the full report, I just put together like twelve lines, um. So let me just send this to Ryan.
Okay.
Anybody else remember when he had to use dial-up to send something?
Yes.
Ten minute, I was pretty little, but you get ten minutes to get on and then ten minutes to. Get it warmed up and a minute or two seems like forever.
So just some quick background to um. Help benefit Commissioner Phillips, so our Warcraft inspection program is not paid for by the WMO, it's actually paid for through a grant. Through the Minnesota State Legislature, we get grant funds that are labeled um Aquatic Avisus Species Prevention Funds. And so we have an AIS program and one of the strategies we use in that program is Warcraft inspections. Um, big screen, um so we've been uh working with waterfront restorations for the last five years. Um, and you can see on this cover page here that we have them place inspectors at five different accesses. Um, within the WMO, so Thole, O'Dowd, two accesses on Cedar Lake. And then the McMahon Lake Access. So if you can go to the next slide for, oh. Okay, so just to also to remind you, um. Inspectors take about three minutes to do the inspection around a boat before they enter the lake and when they're exiting the lake. Um, and I just listed some of the questions that they ask um boaters as they're entering. Um, the lake, you know, how long has their watercraft been out of the water, because that matters if their if their. Watercraft was in a water body that had zebra muzzles, um it's really important that they have that watercraft out of the water for. At least five days, um but twenty-one days is best to make sure that um zebra muzzles have died. It's also good to know when when they were at on the last water body, you know, and this we can look up what that. Infestations are in that water body and what might be a risk to them entering this next lake. Um, and so there's a list of questions that they ask and then they also take some other observations, you know, the the watercraft type. Did they come to the access with the drain plug in or out? Um, it is a Minnesota AIS law violation to come to the public access with your drain plug in. So you should always have your drain plug out when you come to um a public access. Uh, and just a few other pieces of information. Um, so you can go to the next, thank you. Um, so. I just picked some kind of interesting overall slides from the actual report, but the report really gets into um. All this information and breaks it down per lake. But the total number of inspections that were completed in twenty twenty-three was four thousand five hundred ninety-four inspections. Which is the most that have been completed um to date. Um, and that was between all five accesses and you can see this chart has them kind of split up here. Uh, but they started inspections on May twentieth and ended inspections on October eighth. And so this was a two hundred and sixty inspection increase from twenty twenty-two. So twenty twenty-three was a busy voting year. Thank you, um so I I like to put this on because I asked them to do this for me, break it down by week, so we can kind of understand. Uh, what are the busiest weeks, because I typically schedule them. On the weekends, the weekends are the busiest, um for. Because I typically schedule them on the weekends. The weekends are the busiest um, for the accesses. And then to know which week is the busiest, we can make sure we have plenty of coverage. Um, but what's interesting about this is um. So from the, all the surveyed data, we know that July is the busiest month. Um, and then June follows closely after that. Um, so July was just over fourteen hundred. Inspections and Ju- June is about twelve hundred inspections. Um, and then as the season goes on, there's a natural decline in inspections and boaters coming to the accesses, but for the first time. You'll see that week of May twenty-second through May twenty-eighth, there was five hundred thirty-three inspections. The same time in twenty twenty-two, that same week, there were. Five hundred thirty-three inspections done, or I'm sorry, two hundred sixty inspections done that week. So. It almost doubled um, for that week in May in twenty twenty-three, which I thought was really interesting. So. This, oh, and, and just another thing about that slide is it also helps us kind of. Understand how many people are coming on the holidays to, to know how many staff to have um, scheduled. Okay, thanks, Ryan. You can go to the next one then. Um, I also have them break this down by inspection time of day, so I know kind of when to um, ask them to have inspectors. At these accesses, so you can see, obviously Friday, Saturday and Sunday are the busiest days. But then the timeframe from eleven to four is really um, when you see a lot of voters there. So we just make sure we. Have plenty um, inspectors scheduled for those timeframes. So there were some violations this year um, on entering inspections, and it's pretty typical to have. That violation be that plants that are removable by hand. Um, but. I'll show you soon on another slide that we did have an increase in some plug violation. Which we did see a decrease over the years and now um, in twenty twenty-three, it really spiked up, but. Um, you can see my little note there that of the four thousand five hundred ninety-four total inspections. Um, about fifty-three percent of those were entering. Inspections and forty-seven percent were exiting inspections. But we had ninety-one um, entering violations. And again, the pie chart shows that most of them were plants removable by hand. Uh, and the water violation would be is if there's, if they left water in like a live well. Um, that would be a violation. You have to have all water drained from the boat when you um, come to the access. Thanks. Um, so just looking at the last five years and comparing what types of violations there were, um, you can see in twenty twenty-three, there is. Um, quite an increase in plant violations and the drain plug violation really creeped up. Um, so this is helpful for me to know, you know, what do we need to really. Uh, work on for outreach and education for the next year and. Um, looks like people are forgetting about the drain plug law, so we'll have to do some educational outreach um, this year and remind them of that. And maybe do more on um, teaching people about, you know, re- removing all those plants when they exit the lake. I think the plant violation could have something to do with. You know, lake water levels are really low after three years of drought. You know, when they're out there boating, you know, you can really chop up the plants a lot more now with your motor because the water levels are low. So it could just be that. We're seeing that more because the plants are. Really kind of getting chopped up more and then coming out of that access, they're sticking to the boat when, when people are exiting, so. But anyway, those are the most. Violations we've had so far. Um, and just looking over the last five years, kind of comparing how many inspections. Um, have taken place. It's just kind of a fun breakdown to see which lakes are the busiest, and so we know Cedar Lake is really one of our busiest lakes. And that east access, which is the largest access, is really um, busy all the time. Um, and typically O'Dowd Lake is second in line, but it looks like McMahon Lake, in, at least in twenty twenty-three, was really creeping up. On um, being used a lot at that access with almost nine hundred inspections being done there. Um, thanks. So this is one of the questions that the inspectors ask of, um, you know, what was the last water body you visited? And just to kind of orientate you to this is if it's green, that means there's no infestation. More importantly, no infestation of zebra muzzles or Eurasian water milfoil. Now, most of our lakes have curly leaf pond weed, um, but really the focus is on. Saying it's infested is if it's really has zebra muzzles or Eurasian water milfoil. Zebra muzzles really change the lake ecosystem. Once they enter a lake and the lake is infested with that. And Eurasian water milfoil is um, a really high risk because that can be. Uh, it only takes a fragment of that plant to. Enter into another water body that could start a new plant from Eurasian water milfoil. So. Versus curly leaf, it takes a turyan or a seed to start another plant, so. But it's interesting to see where some people are coming from, where their last boat was. And then they always provide us with a summary and um, as every year, you know, the weekends are the busiest. So we really make sure that there's um, plenty of staffing um, scheduled for Friday, Saturdays and Sundays. Again, so ever since COVID, they've had challenges with um, staffing and getting people staffed really early in the season. But they were able to return some inspectors from past years. Um. And there was a lot of variability in the weather too, um, which is kind of stated later. Um. So that's why, you know, we're under a hundred percent of coverage for the allocated hours, you know, ninety-five percent is still pretty good. That they were able to cover all the hours that they were, we were asking them to cover. Uh, but. You know, again, number three is, you know, we've heard this same report from them every year that. Um, the people coming to the accesses are excited to see an inspector there, and they, a lot of cases, they thank them for being there and inspecting boats. Before they're, before they're being launched. So that's always good to hear that they're able to tell us that year after year. Um, you can go to the next slide. And then I just wanted to show you, I know I've included this on each year, but um, in twenty eighteen, the Minnesota Aquatic Invasive Species. Research Center created this model on water bodies that have an infestation risk of zebra muzzles. By the year twenty twenty-five. So this was created in twenty eighteen. And you can see Spring Lake had the highest risk because it's right next to Prior Lake that has been infested for many years. And unfortunately, they were declared infested in twenty twenty-two. So now Spring Lake does have zebra muzzles. Um, but Cedar, so far, we have not found any. We have not found in, any in O'Dowd or in McMahon. Um, they had a lower percentage risk. Uh, but now I would sus- uh, suspect if they reran this model, those um, percentages would increase. Now that Spring Lake um, is infested. Um, so the whole idea behind these um. Inspections is to prevent, you know, the, the rest of these water bodies from getting either zebra muzzles or Eurasian water milfoil. So, so far, so good. Um. Uh, but I think we really need to continue these to, to protect our waters. So hopefully the legislature continues to fund. Um, the AIS prevention um, grant. And Starry Stonewort is something that, and I'll show you on the next slide, is something that was introduced into Minnesota into twenty fifteen. It's a very um. Uh, very dense AIS, once it gets into a water body, so it's. You'll never get rid of it or eradicate it completely. Um, and the. Right now, the management strategies for that is either mechanical or there is a chemical used, but it's, it. So far, um. The den, it only reduces the density somewhat. It, um, so it's something that we don't want to get in our lakes. Um. And this is something that the waterfront created for us that I'm gonna actually put into the county scene, but. There are some lakes, about twenty-seven of them so far in Minnesota. That are infested with um, Starry Stonewort and the closest one, as you can see in Hennepin County there. In Medicine Lake, so it's, it's creeping closer to Scott County, so we really don't want to see that um, introduced. So the watercraft inspections will hopefully continue to help with that. Um, I think that's all I have, so I'm open to any questions if anybody has any, otherwise the full report is in the packet. And I will be posting that to the natural resources page on the Scott County website.
Thanks so much, Melissa. Questions? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move on to our watershed plan update timeline. Looks like you're up again, Melissa.
Yeah, and Ryan, actually, oh, can you go? Yeah, never mind, you're going up to the memo. Oh, to the memo first. Yeah, one more page up. Perfect, thank you. Um, okay, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this. Uh, memo with the timeline and the public engagement plan is in your packet, but I just kind of wanted to go through it. Can you go up just a little bit so I can see the whole timeline? Uh, no, just the list. There we go, perfect. Um. So as stated in the, in the memo, our plan doesn't actually expire until December sixth of twenty twenty-six. We try to give ourselves about two years to do the update. Um, there's a lot of requirements um, that go into the plan and into the entire process. Um, we don't expect that we're going to be doing a complete overhaul of the current plan. Um, but there are sections that do need updating. But I did kind of spread out the timeline to make sure that we have enough buffer in case certain parts of this. Take extra time. But as I said before, March fifth, the board, um. There's an RB on there for them to authorize initiation, the initiation of this plan update process. And after that is that sixty-day review, um, I'm sorry, sixty-day. Uh, notification to where we're asking the review agencies and stakeholders to give us input. Into what we should be um, prioritizing in the plan, what they think the issues are. So in March, after the board approves initiating this process, I will send out that notification for that sixty-day. Input process from those agencies and stakeholders. And then we just got notice from Brad Davis that he has scheduled a board workshop on April sixteenth. So we will have a board workshop with the county board to give them an introduction to this whole process. Ask for some um, feedback from them on, you know, how many times do they want us to have a board workshop on? And in what stages of the plan process. Uh, so that's on April sixteenth, and then we're looking at probably early July for them to hold their official kickoff meeting. That kicks off this whole process and opens up the public input process. So we're having two phases of a public input process. The first is um. Quite extensive. Um, I don't know if anyone had a chance to read the public um, engagement plan that's in the packet, but. Um, the first phase is to, you know, for the public to provide input, um, on, help us understand the issues. And any concerns they have throughout the watershed, and even provide ideas or information on opportunities. That we could use towards drafting or updating the goals or the strategies in the plan. So we're gonna plan up to six virtual stakeholder meetings, so people can just hop onto a meeting and. We'll have a series of questions um, for them to answer. Probably like two pop-up shops, so maybe we could be at the Scott County Fair for one, since this isn't starting until July. And then we'd be open to any ideas on maybe some kind of other um, community event that we could um, pop up at and get people's input. We'll have two in-person meetings, which we're calling community conversation meetings. We'll have an online survey. Um, there are different forums that Scott County has um, created. Um, one that you might be familiar with is Speak Up Scott County, which has been around for several years now. Um, that people could provide input, input into that. Um, just recently, um. Lisa Coner, our Public Relations Officer, um, announced that they've created a, an employee forum called Great Scott. Um, that employees can post information on. So we thought that would be a good way to. Um, post this information in there for in, you know, people who work for Scott County and also live in Scott County. Will get the information that way as well. And then we're gonna have the GIS department help us create an interactive mapping tool that we can provide a link to. So people can look at a map on their computer, create dots, create comments on that. Um, and then we'll also create other kind of engagement materials, flyers, maybe postcards, social media posts. Um, so that will start off in July, that will end around September. Um, and then phase two will start towards the end of the year, where we'll, you know. Update those draft goals and strategies and then have a few, but less. In-person meetings and virtual meetings for um, to solicit feedback on, you know, all that input that people gave us. Is it reflected now in the updated goals and strategies? So that's kind of phase two. And so that should end early spring. Um, and then. So far, I've got on here, you know, January, um, with that. The first sixty-day official review period to start, but it could start sooner. It just depends on how quickly we get through. Um, some of the updates to the plan itself. Um, and then after that official sixty-day review period, there is a, a public hearing that's required in Minnesota statute. So the county board will hold an official public hearing, which will then start that last and final ninety-day review process. And then it, for sure, by October of twenty twenty-six, we would have to be on the agenda for the Board of Order and so resources. Um, last time, the year, their Citizen Advisory Committee invited us to their meeting. And it was basically an open dialogue where they were able to, staff was there and they had, could ask us questions about our plan. And we would have a discussion about our plan and why we put certain things in it. Um. So that would have to happen at the latest by October twenty twenty-six, so that we could be adopting the new version of the plan by December of twenty twenty-six. Again, hopefully this will go a lot faster than that, but this leaves us plenty of, of room to um. If we need extra time for any parts of the update process. Um, so if you could scroll just one page, Ryan. And then in the memo, I just kind of described um, the public um, engagement plan. Not sure if anyone had any uh, chance to review that, but I'd like to go to page eleven and twelve of that. Here at this meeting. So this just kind of goes through why are we doing this, all the different stakeholders we'll be inviting. Um, all the different methods. Um, I think we need to go up one page. Oh, no, sorry, you were on the right page, one page down. Um. So if anyone has any ideas, and, and you don't have to state it now, um. If you want, you can send me an email at a different time, but for phase one, you know, we, we're thinking about in order to reach certain people. I know that um, certain communities, you know, tr- being at church or churches are a really good way to. Connect with a lot of different community members. So we were just interested in if anybody had any ideas on where we could possibly put like a poster display. Um, and we would leave handouts and QR code for people to be able to access. Either our website or get access to the like, online surveys or something. If there's any place that anyone has an idea that. Um, we might be able to do that. Um, that's why I highlighted that section. And that table on the draft plan. Um, you know, we, we will utilize the libraries in Scott County. Um, but a lot of times, you know, just certain larger churches and certain communities are a good way to get. Um, in touch with kind of those rural residents. Um, and then if you could scroll one more page, I think it is the next page also. Um, yes, so, you know, we just have some draft uh questions in here at the moment. I, I do think that we need to change some of them or maybe add some more. So if you have a chance to read through this and you can think of any other questions that you think we should ask, uh, we'd totally be open to hearing those. Um, I would like to finalize this probably in the next two weeks. So if anybody has any inputs that you might want to give now or give in a ne- another week or so, um, that would be great. Um, so with that, I will stand for any questions.
Actually, Madam Chair Commissioners, I'll add to a couple of things to that. Melissa, great job. I remember last month that we, we came to you and asked if you'd be open to helping co-host or host the kickoff meeting. Uh, unfortunately, we heard from uh Bowser and Bowser said that that actually must be overseen by your governing board, which means the WMO board or county board, as the case may be, uh, must actually uh oversee that kickoff meeting. Now that being said, we still feel that the WPC has a very strong leadership role in the WMO and will continue to have a very strong leadership role for the WMO. So looking at the availability of the boards, um, options to meet and have kind of a joint kickoff meeting. Um, we're, we're tentatively at the moment slating it for July. That looks like when the board would be most available to come. And so right now, uh, instead of a, a WPC kickoff meeting in May, um, we're looking at July now and we're hoping it will be a joint uh workshop with the WPC and the board. Um, so that's just one little update, so I know we had you guys uh tentatively scheduling May. Now kind of, you know, hopefully tentatively schedule for July. If we're able to do it uh at the same time as the WPC meeting, that's our first hope, uh, that's our first choice. Uh, but it may have to be a slightly different day uh because of the board's availability. And we will let you know as soon as we're able to schedule that one. Uh, so you'll get an update on that one as well. Uh, the second thing is just a reminder, uh, it's just uh the, the three of us you see before you who are doing all of this work for the WMO. Uh, a lot of other agencies have a bit more staff and oftentimes hire a consultant to even do the whole plan writing. Uh, we don't, uh, we're looking to maybe hire a consultant to do, just assist with some of the data analysis. Uh, but generally speaking, uh, we'll be writing this plan again. Uh, Melissa will be leading it like she did last time, but of course remembering Melissa also coordinates many other programs. Uh, so we do try to spe- space it out a little bit, uh, just because staffing is really just so tight. Um, and what does that mean for the next year when you're kind of looking at this uh citizen engagement process? Uh, we'll probably be looking to you to try to reach out to your neighbors and your other local leaders and decision makers, also to help get feedback. Uh, we tend to have a very aggressive citizen outreach program, far more than is required by uh statute. Uh, and the reason is because we feel that this should be a citizen-driven plan. Uh, you know, we can do all we want, uh, sitting here as scientists, writing things that we should do. But unless it's supported and driven by the citizens, we're really not going to be very successful in what we do. Uh, but that also means, you know, we'll be very, very busy and we need to kind of space the timing out just a little bit more uh, really to get some of that citizen feedback. And these days, it also means you have to do twice as many different kinds of outreach to get half as much feedback. I mean, you can't just have a public meeting and everybody will show up. That doesn't really work anymore. You have to do public meetings and you have to go to places and you have to, you know, meet one-on-one and you have to come up creative ways. You have to do social media, virtual meetings, uh, and and integrate all these different opportunities uh, to hopefully get, you know, as much feedback as you got last time. So it's a little bit, again, more insight too as to this planning process. It's also a part of uh why Melissa putting together this published engagement plan is really so helpful in moving forward, uh, because there's going to be a lot of moving parts with just a few people to do it.
Madam Chair, Melissa, this is Commissioner Phil. Um, have you ever thought of setting up a table at a farm auction? Because that's your target audience.
That is a great suggestion. I don't think, Melissa, have we ever thought of that?
No, no, good idea.
That's a great idea.
You give them donuts, you'll, if you get a, get them donuts and hot coffee, but you'll compete with a, with a wagon, with a lunch wagon. But uh, you get donuts, at least he'll be lining up.
Donuts, I can buy donuts, so many donuts. Thank you.
The kickoff meeting, I assume will be in person and not virtual?
Yes, Madam Chair. And we do, again, uh, our goal is, of course, to bring the WPC in person for some of these uh, plan-related activities.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I think it's just going to be much better in person anyway, so.
And we'll bring donuts to those too, just, you know, every donuts, coffee, fruit.
Um, any other suggestions for Melissa on the locations for posting or questions for stakeholders?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is uh Commissioner Phillips. Uh, something I thought of is maybe the um sportsman clubs meetings, I don't know if that was thought about, but maybe sportsman's club meeting or may perhaps post a board at um I don't know, Savage City Hall would allow something there in the public area. But um, maybe the city halls or town hall, uh, buildings. What uh, maybe um, place to set up posters for input, just an idea.
No, thank you. That's also other great ideas.
Maybe you're doing it already, but um, yeah.
Yeah, actually, um, one of the things that I am going to do in the beginning is I'm going to attend at least one um township meeting to just introduce myself, introduce the process and then leave them some materials so that whenever somebody stops into the township hall, they would have access to either the QR code or the, the web URL to be able to access our plan update page. So, but thank you for that input, yeah.
Uh, if we think of anything else, probably just email you, Melissa, in the next couple of weeks.
Yep, that would be great.
Okay.
It could be bullet points, incomplete sentences, bad grammar, half thoughts, we'll take them.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Well, thanks for this overview and yeah, appreciate all the hard work you guys put into this. I know plan writing is, at least for me, was never the most fun thing to do. And I, so I, I know it's, it's, could be a lot of work for sure. So thanks for all your hard work. Okay, I think that's it for today. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Commissioners, they'll still move.
This is Commissioner Casilius. I make a motion that we, uh, oops, that we conclude the meeting.
All right, I think that counts as our two, right, Vanessa?
Uh, Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitts.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Phillips.
Hi.
And Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. Enjoy this wonderful weather.
All right, thanks so much. Bye.